I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item of business is the adoption of the agenda for today's board meeting. The October 8th, 2025 agenda has been distributed to all members. Are there any corrections, additions, or changes? If not, the agenda will be adopted as presented. With the agenda now presented or adopted, we'll move into the next item. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes from September 10th, 2025, which was the board meeting, and September 24th, the work session. May I have a motion to approve these minutes? May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Board Member Alexandra. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian. Any additions, corrections, or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to approve the minutes carries. At this time, we have public comments. I will read a little something before we welcome our, the people who sign up to comment. Good evening, we are about to convene in public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it's crucial for us to hear from our community members, our staff, about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your comments, concerns, and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will however respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. Please be aware that disrespectful comments or comments of a personal nature directed at an individual such as an employee or BOE member, either by name or inference, will not be permitted. If this occurs, you will be asked to end your comments. We ask that speakers please address the comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. In the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during public comment period if you do, if you choose to do so. The board will now welcome public comments. Each individual speaker is allotted three minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. So I would like to welcome Will Randall. Good evening.
Good evening. I don't need a microphone. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Will Randall and I am a special education teacher at Schenectady High School. I've been in the district for nine years, going to be 10, and I am very happy to be employed in this district. I love working with my colleagues and my students. However, I am here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the ongoing issues of odor and poor ventilation in the high school, specifically in the A/B wing, and about how slowly meaningful action is taking place. Eighteen classrooms in the A/B wing experienced problems that have been documented. These are learning spaces where students and staff spend most of their day breathing in air that doesn't feel safe or healthy. Many of us have experienced headaches, coughs, or other symptoms while working in these rooms. Some of our students, especially those with asthma or other health needs, are being directly impacted. On a personal note, last year I was sick for more than four months. I've also been diagnosed with kidney cancer in the past. While I was recovering, I was very concerned about the air quality upon my return. With a compromised immune system, I struggled to be in these spaces because of the fear it instills in me about how I am being protected here. I can say this, when you spend day after day in a building with exposure to odor and poor air circulation, it's impossible not to worry about what you're breathing. I want to acknowledge that the district has recently begun taking steps, cleaning curtains, replacing ceiling tiles, conducting air testing, and planning ventilation upgrades. But these measures seem very slow and reactive. In the meantime, students and staff continue to work in unhealthy conditions. These issues have plagued the district for many years, essentially since the A/B wing was built back in 1982. A request for air purifiers costing less than $2,000 was already approved by the administration, including Dr. Carlos Coto Jr., and it was denied. That denial sends a painful message that our health is not being prioritized. I'm asking the board to take stronger, faster action, approve immediate air purifiers and dehumidifiers for all 18 rooms affected, communicate transparently about air quality results, accelerate and specify the timeline for long-term improvements. We tell our students that when something's wrong, they should speak up. Tonight, I'm following that same lesson because the air we breathe should never be negotiable. Thank you for your time.
And I would like to welcome Al Toppin. Good evening.
Good evening, board. Thanks for allowing me to come and share with you just some conversations that I've been experiencing from the summer until, well, currently. And some of the exciting things, I've been reminded of how I love our students and young people, really cool. I was out just walking around and came across a mom. She was walking her dog and she asked me, "Do you work for the school district?" And I said, "Yes, I do." And she said, "Tell me something, how come our kids are not reading?" And I said, before I could answer anything, then she went on to say, "You know, students, they, they all learn differently." She says, "My, my sister-in-law, she has four students, one at elementary, and a couple in the middle, and another one at the high school level, and they all learn differently." And I says, "Yeah, you're right. I appreciate your comment." I says, "We're working really hard at all of our students learning well." And so she, she said, "So what's going on?" I said, "Well, one of the things that I could think of right away is what I'm involved in is family literacy." And I said, I told her about the program and how we meet on a Saturday and the idea of it is gathering families in a smaller community so that they can hear about the school district and see how their children are learning and participate in that learning. Then I think of another conversation that I had. Hispanic month, this month, and just having a great time. Went over and spoke with one of the student junior, she's a junior. She's a neonatal, she wants to be a needle, neonatal surgeon. That's a mouthful. And I, I was just blown away by that. As I'm listening to her talk, I says, "Well, what, what is your routine?" And she says, "Well, I'm one of 12. I get up early in the morning, I get up at 4:30 and I go work out, and then I come back and I do go through my school." She says, "You know, I'm part of big picture." I says, "Oh, that's really good." And she says, "You know, I'm, I said, "So you do an internship?" And she says, "Yes, I'm interning at Ellis Hospital." I said, "Fantastic." She says, "I've waited for this opportunity for three years." And so as she was unfolding her excitement, I was thinking about what we do. And this is just a reminder to all of us, as a month in for school and as we look at the rest of the school year, again, my love for our students and how they learn differently and what a privilege we have to serve them in such a way. Thank you.
Thank you. This ends our session on public comments, but I do want to thank both community members, staff members that came to the podium. We will follow up, Mr. Randall, because there were a few things that I do want to follow up with you. So we'll do that at some point.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Toppin. Thank you very much. We will now begin with comments from Superintendent Davis.
So, good evening, board, students, faculty, staff, and community. With this particular board comment piece on mind, we're going to speak of regionalization. I want to have our Deputy Superintendent Joe DiCaprio come up to kind of share a PowerPoint presentation, but also want to share that Capital Region Voces had a retreat this past summer where we kind of engaged in conversations just around regionalization and some of the efforts that we already have in place, brainstorming those efforts, but then also looking at other ways in which we can support and kind of bring some of what we have. We have a lot of amazing things happening in Schenectady to seeing how we can connect those programs to the neighboring districts and also look to see how we can tap into those programs outside of our district to just enhance this model of regionalization. So I'm going to have Joe give us a quick presentation that we can.
Thank you, Dr. Coto. Good evening, board of education.
Good evening.
Community and on the screen. So as Dr. Coto mentioned, the 24 superintendents across Capital Region came together to formalize a plan of more of what's to come around regionalization, which aligns with the Blue Ribbon New York State Education Department Commission that created the work on the New York State Inspires Portrait of a Graduate Initiative to drive our pathways to look different as we graduate and move students beyond the district in just a number of ways. So the purpose of this plan is to begin to showcase collaborative efforts across regions and identify where we're going to need supports in the immediacy locally, but also to and from the New York State Department of Education. So if you have that second slide, there's two parts to the plan. The regional activity portion, which is part one, that as I referenced, the 24 districts in Schenectady County through Voces coming together to work on where do we have any existing partnerships where we're currently working together? And then to tie over to part two, where can we build in an innovative manner sort of that leg up to push additional resources, whether it's legislative supports, maybe there's changes internally and externally to systems to better those partnerships, to a little bit more cohesive opportunities across the district. So that's the second part, and that includes recommendations that were discussed. There is a process that requires each superintendent across the 24 districts to certify the recommendations in collaboration, which Dr. Coto did and submitted. Really, really good communication on this. So there's no surprises and it truly is collective conversation and in a real focused manner across the 24 districts. The process is up against the timeline, as on the next slide. And we're right at about the August/September square. District review, certify, and complete the plan and submit. Obviously, the submission date was the first, but as far as where we are, Dr. Coto and I reviewing recommendations and looking to push, where's this next step for us as Schenectady? If you hit the next slide. And that takes us to the highlight plans where we're focusing currently for our district on some of the topics that were discussed. Special education, leadership development, some of our distance learning options, both in-person and virtual, the pre-K approach, that's a real need across all of our districts that knows no specific demographic or region, just the importance of hitting our earliest learners with the best of instruction and setup. So that, how we look at busing, transportation from a district standpoint and potentially county. So as we move forward, that's kind of part one focus. How will we support that, looking at aid, whether it's from state, whether it's locally, getting creative with the dollar, our workforce pipeline, how we retain employees as much as higher? The concept of universal pre-K, fulfilling that need across neighboring districts in partnership. Maybe that's shared staffing, shared spacing, lots of opportunity and great ideas that have, have been conversed about at, you know, the very precipice of, of conversation. Embracing artificial intelligence. We are ahead of the game as a district in having an adoptive policy, but now shifting to practice, sharing how we got to that policy development and where we are with implementing strategies to support AI as a tool for, for enhancing learning and teaching. Looking at workforce training and frameworks around maybe the concept of regional schools. We have the Proctors Collaborative. You know, that's something that is a really good stepping stone for neighboring districts. And you'll hear from Dr. Coto and I at near-future board meetings around where we've taken sort of a first baby step with our neighboring district, Mississauga Central School District, specific to the Proctors Collaborative and welcoming their students on a trial basis in to see that program, experience it, and what it's like to really engage in amazing fine arts instruction at a location that's not necessarily a quote-unquote typical school, and that's Proctors Theater. So that's the work. And today, it's more just to update you on the process that we are in compliance. It's going really well and we're a leader amongst the, the collaboration right now, but where we will go with action steps. At this point, any questions, conversation?
Or number Kathy?
The, what's been, what's been discussed regarding sharing of the expenses between districts and that sort of thing? I know that those, that's a major issue among, among the other school, other areas of the, of state that are considering regionalization.
I think right now it's interest-based. So maybe our approach with the Proctors Collaborative, for instance, is like.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
So it's interest-based, so numbers of kids that we would anticipate. So I'll use our Mississauga Partnership as an example. You know, we got, we have to serve our students first and foremost. Space after that, how much can we accommodate? What's the per-people cost for one student per se? And then how far can we go to estimate, you know, a cap initially? And I think that's not all that different than some of the conversations that Dr. Coto has been a part of.
Some of the models that we have now, like our athletic program, we have mergers, so there's some cost.
We have some of the teams we have that work together, yeah?
So there's been a lot of examples of smaller ways in which to support. Transportation in other districts, there's shared services, special ed's shared services. So we're kind of in the, in the mix of now the conversation to see where we initially go into some of these particular ones, but then we're also looking at what we have here in Schenectady and how do we broaden that outside of the area.
Now, is SED, I see the last one, which was the October 1st date, is SED issuing approvals on this, on the plan that's come from Capital Region Voces? Or how is that working?
Yeah, we had to submit on October 1st and they are reviewing and then we'll approve. And we're looking at five to 10 years as far as how we, this is kind of new. I think we're ahead of the game as it relates to the pathways that we have. So it's, I love to look into connect and try to make Schenectady be the pilot to some of these amazing things. School of the Arts is a vision that we've had and I think the conversations that we've had with our neighboring districts, they've come in, they've had a tour of the practice program, but we also look at our center city location, we've got a big picture location. So I think we've got a lot of amazing things happening in Schenectady and seeing how we can.
So my third question is what, have we identified anything among the 23 other districts that are part of Capital Region Voces that we can take advantage of at their locations, you know, at their, in their districts? I mean, apart from the mergers of, or whatever we call it with regard to the teams, but with, you know, in terms of, I saw you had distance learning, for example. Are there subjects that are, are ones that we would do?
Distance learning is one. I think with the Seat Center partnership that we have, that's in collaboration with Voces. I think professional development and then leadership development are some things that we've already started in partnership with Albany and some other districts. So we have started on self-ops.
Yeah, I have nothing to add.
Okay, thanks.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
The 10-year plan, now, can it be modified as we go throughout the years? You know, is it set in stone or, I mean, I'm assuming it's not set in stone, but I'm wondering if it's not.
Yeah, because they're recommendations. So I think we're going to navigate this together and then hopefully be in communication with SED around how it works here in Schenectady and how it works for Capital Region. So to be a working, kind of a working document throughout.
I would say, the pathways are really clear.
Yes.
We're giving information, but we're also receiving it back. I think that's been pretty consistent since the New York State Inspires shift has been launched. I've noticed the state had been very intentional about circling back to ask about how it's going. Because I think we're, we're creating a new state. So we might as well figure this out together. And I've noticed a real intentional open, set of open lines that we will give, but we will also openly receive.
And then it might be too early, but I'm wondering what kind of partnership? Has I noticed that students with specialty, special education was there? Can you talk a little bit about that or is it still in its infancy?
I would say still infancy stages. I think what we're doing to Kathy's earlier question is exploring the depth of programming within the 24 districts and what, what does that look like? What do maybe self-contained programs here look like versus here? And we're hoping to maybe find some commonalities and maybe some different ways to approach the, you know, the best learning environment, environments for our kids.
Or number Vivian?
So I understand that with special education, it is still in its infancy, but can you maybe paint a picture of perfect world? What would that look like as far as a regionalization and the partnerships across different districts? What exactly are you trying to accomplish specifically regarding a special ed?
I would say, you know, without projecting with a level of exactness because I don't know district staffing as well, but I would say expertise in the real finite needs that exist in the special education teaching curriculum and continual. Where are, do we have trained professionals that could really target significant, you know, needs that are, tend to be individualized? But if we've got maybe a depth as we broaden the scope outside of one district to 24, maybe we could find resources that exist that allows to tailor that instruction in a much more individualized manner. I think that's probably one. Then I think spacing, looking at how could we support small group environment in a manner that feels like high-quality instruction, but trauma-sensitive, informed to, you know, spaces that are always about learning, but also about navigating emotional regulation and ways in which we could teach best practices and engaging one another from a social standpoint.
So just one question.
Yeah.
Because I just, so I'm wondering, are we thinking that we will also have students visit other schools and do?
Absolutely, yeah. And that's the.
And we've led that recently. We've had some of the students visit over to our Proctors Program. So we're looking to see, do the same thing with our neighboring districts.
I sort of asked, but I'm not sure if I asked it or not, so I'm going to ask it again. The, is, is SED intending to approve these, give comments back to us? What, what's happening as far as SED and this regionalization plan? And of course, are there what, how, 37 of them across the state? I mean, I'm not sure, are there going to be comparisons and so forth or?
So I would say we'd be submitting on October 1st, they're reviewing them. I'm sure they'll come back with some thoughts, suggestions. And there is an approval process, but we'll be working with them to kind of then tighten up what it is that we're sharing. But it is a work in progress. So it's not something, these are the things that are happening right now within the region in partnership. And it's just now looking to see how do we tap into those particular resources and partnerships that are already existing in the smaller districts or other districts and bring some of those resources here? And then also take the resources that we have here in Schenectady and share them with or partner with neighboring districts.
Just as a point of information, for example, in some areas, they're doing regional high schools as a, as a means of being able to expand the programs available to students because they can't all be offered in one district. You know, the sheer numbers, the smaller numbers that exist, for example, up in the outer Arctic, that sort of thing. So that's just, just a part of this whole regionalization concept.
Which is one of our municipal resolutions. Thank you.
You got it.
Superintendent DeCaprio. Uh, Deputy, Deputy Superintendent DeCaprio.
Okay, so now we will begin with comments from our SBR and the board. We'll start with SBR Janice.
Hey.
Hi.
Um, I don't know, I don't remember if I've shared this or not, but a few weeks ago, myself and Isaiah and Cole, we went over to Capital Region Voces and we did a student board representative kind of training session. It was very, it was very different, especially from our orientation that we had our first year going into it. It was, it was very similar, but also very different. It was a lot of people, I was surprised. I didn't know, I mean, I knew because it's a mandate now that there would have been a lot of people, but I didn't expect that many people. It was refreshing to see that there's other people who are doing what we do and who are trying to help out the community. We did a lot of, I want to say bonding things with the people at our table because we were all strangers. It was a little, it did feel like a little, how do I say it? It felt like we were a little ahead of the game when it came to all the information that was being given there since we had been doing it for a year prior to that training session. And that training session had a lot of fresh minds and fresher people who are fresher to the board. But it was a really overall good experience and it was, it was some new information that we gathered from there and it was very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you, SBR Janice. And then we'll continue with, with Board Member Alexandra.
So, hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I had an opportunity come to touch base with all of the principals and where I will serve as a liaison for this year. How, Eats, and Schenectady's our campus. And I am so excited. This year, you know, I took a year to kind of get acclimated, but I'm excited to be, be of support and be intentional about my connections with those schools that I will serve this year. So I thought I'd share that.
Thank you, Board Member Alexandra. And Board Member, member Jamaica?
Hey, y'all. Thank you to the folks that came up and spoke today as always. The only thing I'm going to talk about today, there's always a lot of our families that need help and support. We don't always know when they need help and support. We very much know right now, there is one family in need. There's a young man, his name is Ricky Stanley, he's 11 years old. He's been, he's been missing since Tuesday morning at 10:00 a.m. was the last time he was seen. There are a number of groups and individuals and organizations that's sharing the information out. It is on my organizational page, untitled and free on Facebook and Instagram. We're asking everyone to please share it. Again, his name is Ricky Stanley, he's 11 years old. He was last seen Tuesday morning at 10:00 a.m. on Van Brinken. If you have any information, there's contact for the family listed. This is that moment and there's lots of them where someone is in need and we have the opportunity to make their lives easier and to help them. And if there's ever a family that is in need, our district has always stepped up when someone's missing or there's a concern or there's a conflict. If families don't know to reach out to your principal, please do because the same thing happened today and our principals always step up and look for ways that they can support. So again, Ricky Stanley, he's 11 years old and we just want to make sure he gets home.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Board Member Vivian?
No comment.
Board Member Kathy?
I just would mention that sports are in full swing around the district and, and so I attended a football game and, and those are, those are always exciting. I also went to the Grouse Park Run this past Saturday. It's the 86th running of the Grouse Park Run. I don't know if most people realize how much history that that has. It's held in Central Park. There were 44 school districts represented there. It's always quite interesting. I didn't see as many buses this time, but to see their various tents for that, it was, it was a lovely day. And I don't know if you were going to mention it or not, but Schenectady's.
One of our boys varsity team won the championship, first time in 35 years.
It was the last, it was the last event of the, of the day. And I mean, it's, it's pretty impressive to see that many runners start off. And then I think we had three finish in the top, top 10, as it was, and so on. So that's, those are a few of the things that I've been involved in.
Hey, thank you, Board Member Kathy. And I as well visited all my liaison schools and it's been a great experience. I also, as well as Dr. Coto, we attended a bunch of Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations at Lincoln and that was amazing. And I do want to shout out the instructional leader, Lori Timmies, but also was coordinated by Tom Muller, Taisha Spotswood, and Alicia Persad. It was a lot of fun, the students were amazing. It was such a nice celebration. It was PBIS Academic Assembly and Hispanic Heritage Month. And then there was another one at MLK School, which is also my liaison school. I was a guest speaker also for Hispanic Heritage Month. And I want to give shout out to Jasmine Santiago. And there were two PTO parents that also joined me and I can't remember their names. So I apologize, but I read to pre-K kindergarten on autism, K to 12 class, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and it was awesome. I had a lot of fun. Then Schenectady High School, and I know, Dr. Coto, you were there as well. There was a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration and it was organized by parent liaison, De Elena Melendez. And there were others, but it was really, it was very nice visiting the schools and seeing all the wonderful things that the schools are doing and seeing how excited the students were. So thank you.
I wonder if I could ask one question. I had someone from the community ask, she has quite a few clothes and so on, that she would love to donate, really taking one of our elementary schools, you know, maybe each month or something like, what's the best way to get them to an individual school? That, that, I didn't know the answer myself, so.
I would say through the Department of Innovation, Equity, Engagement. Dr. Kelly would be a point person and she can, depending on what school that individual wants to. Dr. Kelly would be a point person and she can, depending on what school that individual wants to support a particular building, she can make those connections.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the lease and purchase agreement resolution of 1080 Catalin Street. So CFO Terry Mulley will provide an overview of the lease and the purchase agreement, including key financial details and implications. Following this presentation, the floor will be open for the board members to ask questions and to request clarification if necessary. Once the discussion concludes, we proceed to vote on the resolution. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, when I started here, um, you know, we had a mission of improve our safety and climate of all of our buildings and our school. As you know, we have started a $300 million project, phases for the instructional spaces within the building. In addition to that, we are working, uh, just, uh, had a bid for a part of that project is the kitchen at Mount Pleasant that will better serve our students throughout the district, but it's better located. During that project, um, we identified the need for space for our O and M facilities people. Uh, we are currently, you know, just servicing with that department, uh, 18, probably 18 buildings throughout the district, our elementary, middle, high and our other programs. It's like 1.6 million square feet within all of our buildings, 126 acres. So as you can imagine, the staff and the equipment and the resources that are needed to keep our buildings safe and clean environment, um, we really don't have any space for those people to work out of, at a regular basis, besides the ones that are assigned to the buildings, like the custodial cleaners. Um, people that may not know, we also have highly skilled licensed staff people that maintain these buildings, such as electricians, plumbers, grounds workers, carpenters, masons. So they really are working now currently out of the Mount Pleasant, uh, Middle School. I almost called it the high school, sorry, Mount Pleasant Middle School. And is it a very small space that they're utilizing? We also have obviously snow plow, uh, trucks, lawnmowers, um, to maintain all the facilities, snow blowers. So with your direction, um, you know, what, as we did with central office being stuffed in Mount Pleasant, uh, we relocated here in this building and that has worked out great. We are looking to do the same thing for our O and M department. Provide them a facility where they are able to store inside the facilities, the vehicles, um, and additional like supplies and materials and equipment and all that. Um, this proposal is a 44,000 square foot building. Uh, we looked throughout the city, um, it's located, um, I'm not sure if anybody is aware, kind of where the CVS is on Chrysler Avenue and Altman Avenue, uh, where everybody probably went and got their driver's test, that Bauer Street. There's a street that's, um, perpendicular to that, that there's a big old warehouse. Um, so during this process, we had our architects review the building. Uh, we went in the building and how it could be utilized. But like as if every other building like this one, we will need public approval to purchase the building. So that can't happen till May. But the need for, uh, space now, working with the owner, who is an ex-graduate of actually Litton High School, um, we are working with him to have a lease option to move into the building, uh, in November. We're actually starting, as soon as this is approved, certain parts of the building because he does have certain, uh, people currently renting from him, that he will be able to get them out of the building by January 1st. However, we will be able to move our stuff that we need to get out of Mount Pleasant to start the capital project piece in Mount Pleasant next month. Um, so we will be able to move their materials and current supplies out of Mount Pleasant over into this building. And then as the process of him, we'll be secured in the building too. We just have access, other people that are currently in there will not have access. We will be able to move our stuff over there and then as of January 1st, he would have his tenants out. We would have a lease for the time being until it is approved by the voters in May as a proposition. Once they approve the purchase of the building, we will have full access with the closing costs and everything else. The purchase price of the building is $850,000. Um, it just recently had a new roof put on it, within the last two or three years with warranty for like $250,000. Um, and this space has been reviewed by, um, the administration, O and M staff, architects, engineers, and it's a safe, sound building, so there's no concern about anything with that. The reason why we're doing the lease purchase, obviously, is because the vote is not happening till May and we don't need a specialized vote. Um, I don't know if there's any questions in regards to the lease funding to purchase the building of $850,000. There's a number of ways, I have not made the final determination, but we are in a good place. We could either borrow and pay out, just like a mortgage, over 30 years, $850,000. Um, $850,000 is approximately 0.3% of our current budget. If we were able to have savings in the current year, um, of 800 some thousand, we could apply the savings in the current year towards the purchase of the building. And we also have, not to give out too much because of audit hasn't been presented. This year, we had a couple prior year adjustments to our ARP funds. We made some general fund available, which provides us over to 4%, so we could use the savings from '24, '25 fiscal year to purchase the building. So I'm not concerned about the funds to purchase the building. It's a small, a small percentage of our budget, but it'll definitely make our O and M staff more efficient, uh, better and have a better place. Uh, we run to Home Depot on a daily basis where other vendors pick up supplies and materials to provide them the necessary space to store and be more efficient throughout the building. And the longevity of our equipment that's currently maybe trucks sitting outside, plows and all that, and free up some space within the buildings. Um, you know, we are lacking space in a lot of our elementary, middle school and high school. So by removing a lot of the equipment that may be stored inside of some of those buildings, uh, materials on a daily basis, we'll be able to store those there. Any questions?
No questions, Board Member Cathy.
Uh, just, uh, just occurred to me as you were, um, talking, Terry, the operating costs, or sorry, the lease cost right now are $10,000 a month, right? From now till May or we, we close, until we close.
Yeah, it's pro-rata for October would be, and it'd be $10,000 a month. And I budgeted money for a lease of an O and M building in the '25, '26 budget, projecting that we may be potentially getting a space, knowing that we would be able to work.
So that's in the general fund, or coming out of it?
Yeah, it's coming out of the general fund, which has already been budgeted for.
And then the other question I had is, how much is it gonna cost us to fit out that, that space for the purposes?
Like, uh, like the.
What renovation, what, what, what aspects?
Well, right now it.
Phone systems, offices?
Yeah, we don't really need, yeah, we don't really need to do any work to it. Um, again, it's an O and M, internet connection is really all they will, will need.
That would just be terrible.
Yeah, the space itself, um, you know, talking to the, um, current owner, you know, he doesn't keep it at our expectations, our employees a little higher heat, but he said, uh, I figured the cost would, was anything that would be, you know, something that we couldn't afford in our budget. If we put it out with all the rest of our buildings, with our consortium of, uh, heat and energy. So to equip the building, to answer your question, it already has Wi-Fi, so it just matters converting it over to ours.
No, I'm sticking, I mean, building.
Yeah, there's not, we would have a repair reserve set up for that for any, but really, everybody's seen the building. It's, there's really not much you really need to do, you know? It, um, maybe cleaning up a little bit and cosmetic stuff, but not, like I said, the new roof is on it, windows are fine. Um, the space is really good, if anything, make it more, we wouldn't, um, like we need storage for furniture, so we would have a plan to what, rather than just throwing everything in there and not have organization, we'd have a plan to how the building would be set up to utilize it to maximize. So it's really not like in the future, no different than any one of our other buildings and how we maintain those.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll now accept a motion to approve the lease and purchase agreement for 1080 Catalin Street. May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica, second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Alexandra. All in favor?
I'm opposed.
The motion to approve the lease and purchase agreement for 1080 Catalin Street carries. We will now move to the consent agenda items. The consent agenda includes items considered routine and approved together in one motion unless a board member requests that an item be removed for separate discussion or vote. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda? We will now proceed to vote on the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 7A through L? May I have a motion? Someone, thank you, Board Member Vivian, second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Cathy. Any discussion? I do wanna congratulate Kelsey Flood for your new position, welcome. Congratulations. You're welcome to the faculty, correct? Congratulations.
Does he not do the I?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna do that. Oh, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations officially. Both?
And Donna.
Yeah. Oh, Donna, congratulations for your tenure. Congratulations. Okay, the motion to approve the consent agenda item 7A through L carries. At this time, we will begin discussing two discussion topics. We'll start with the board vacancy or open board seat. A seat is currently open due to Nohalani Etienne vacating her position because of family obligations and relocation outside of the city of Schenectady. Once again, we wish her the very best and thank her for her dedication and service to the Schenectady Board of Education. Since this was a vacated seat, there is no immediate action required. Our next step is to stop, to decide how we will vote forward, how we will move forward, excuse me. The options are as follows. Uh, appoint a qualified resident to fill the vacancy until the next regular election. Offer the seat to the third highest vote getter from the most recent election. Call a special election to fill the vacancy. Leave the seat vacant until the next regular election, which is permitted under small city school districts guidelines. So tonight, we will have an open conversation about how we wish to proceed. There is no official vote required at this time. Our goal is to reach a consensus or majority understanding on how to move forward. I will now open the floor for discussion. Please make a motion if you would like to share your thoughts. I do wanna share that up on the, on the, um, screen is framing the conversation. So policy 1240 does talk about resignation and dismissal, but notice there it said the policy also addresses filling a vacancy. In my script, I specifically included electing the third vote getter since, since that detail isn't explicitly mentioned in section C, but is alluded, so that's why I mentioned it here. But in the policy, there's three, okay? But under C, it talks about this, about, um, it alludes to, um, appointing someone, anyone that we want. So the guiding question to consider, which option most aligns with our board's commitment to stability, transparency and what's best for our students, district, community and voters? So I open up the floor. So again, adopt, appoint a qualified resident to fill the vacancy, offer the seat to the third, um, highest vote getter, call a special election to fill the vacancy and leave the, um, seat vacant until the next regular election. Does anyone wanna start?
I'll start, having, having been through this before. I'm inclined, not, might not be able to be persuaded elsewhere, to leave the seat vacant until the May election. I just feel that it gives an opportunity for people to express their interest in perhaps serving on the board and, and so on. So that's where I'm leaning.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, sure.
Are you sure?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Um, I, I kind of think that the, doing the third highest vote getter would be a good opportunity because I don't see why we wouldn't put someone who's motivated to serve on the board when there's a vacant seat. Um, and it would give people a chance to see, just in case that person may run again, to see their performance for the upcoming election in May. So I think that's a pretty good idea.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, so I think not the special election, how about that? It, it, it just seems like such a short turnaround time for us to try that special election and then for that person, if they so want to, they would have to run for election again in May. Cause just so that everyone understands and correct me if I'm wrong, if someone is by some process chosen for this seat, it only goes through May.
Correct.
They would have to, if they wanted to stay in the seat, they would have to run again by whatever means they get there. Um, so it, 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 I love the idea of the voters choosing because it's the voter's choice. That's how we all got here, is that voters said, well, a, a portion of voters said, this is our, our choice for, for school board. Um, I think the special election just seems like, uh, a lot for that short of, uh, amount of time. And I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards, um, leaving it open until May so that there's an opportunity for whoever wants to run for election to run for election and to be voted onto the school board, just like the rest of us were, and for voters to have that opportunity to make that decision. Those are my current thoughts.
Any questions? Yes, Vivian, Board Member Vivian.
Honestly, um, directed towards Board Member Cathy, I know you said that you made your decision to leave it open until May.
No, I said I, I was leaning that direction and I, I might be.
I was just curious as to, cause I know you said it was based on like previous experience, like you've been through this before.
Yes, we did that.
So would you be able to elaborate on anything in particular that, um, led you to making, to leaning in that direction?
I guess I just feel that it, it, it gives the community an opportunity to look at the, uh, you know, look at themselves and see if, if they're interested in serving. Um, I think it was a little bit shorter period. My recollection is that it might have been vacated in late January or February and, and then went to May. But I didn't, it's not often, and we've had tie votes with seven, seven, uh, members. So, um, I, I don't think that is necessarily a reason to require a seventh person to be here. Um, I guess that's, I, that's the way I, I, I feel about it at this point and in terms of it.
I appreciate, I was just trying to get understanding, that's all, cause I haven't, obviously I haven't experienced this before, so I just wanted to get some understanding.
We may have had it twice, I'm trying to remember, I know we had it at least once, but I, I'd have to look back and I didn't go back that far, so. And we had Ed Koch on hand, I think, Gary.
Both of those lessons.
And I don't think that.
But Ed, had, didn't he have a longer term before, because he.
I don't, I don't recall the specific, he had been on before, I think, and then had gone to one of the other legislative.
He got elected to city council.
And then, yes.
And that's how he vacated.
And then he, I think he may have come back or something at some point, so.
Board Member Alexandra.
Now, this might be unpopular, unpopular opinion, but let the race begin. If you want the seat, you should earn it. I think looking at the third highest voter getter was, was the people speaking that that was not necessarily one of their top choices. But then, yeah, that's, that's where, that's where I stand.
I, I'm, so I, I'll, I'll share my concerns first. We've had some tough conversations on the board when there were six people on the board and it was a 3-3, and they were some serious conversations. My concern is that we don't know what other conversations we're gonna have in the future and it's going to be possibly a 3-3 vote and that fourth vote would really kind of make the deciding decision. And I don't know if you all remember some of those votes, but they were tough. Also, we have things that happen in life, right? And people are not attending some of the board meetings. And if we have less than four, we cannot run a board meeting. Um, and that's been a reality for the last three years. Also, I do feel it's important that we have a representative, this is October, so the year just started. It'll be different if this was, you know, April, but this is October, the year just started. And I think it's really important to, to do what we can to ensure that we have someone on the board that represents the views of the board. And I do agree that we had an election and we had a third vote getter. And I do feel that that might be the best way to go, so we have someone on the board. Cause as you said, Jamaica.
Because as you said, Jamaica, in May, there's going to be an election. Either way, whatever, we decide there's an election in May. So I do, I do feel that it would be beneficial if we have another person on the board for many of the reasons, and I have other reasons, but many of the reasons that I mentioned. Because those have been the realities of what's happening on the board in terms of really hot topic votes. But also, there's the reality that people have life going on and they can't always be at the board meeting.
Then I have a question.
Sure.
What would a special election look like? Like, how much time does it take? What does a turnaround need to be? How much notice has to be given? Because I don't think that it should be our decision. I think it should be the decision of the voters. And while the third highest vote getter was the third highest vote getter, that meant they lost. And yeah, it means that there were people that, and listen, I'm not saying this in any regards to, I can't even tell you who the third highest vote getter was. I didn't go and look. But I would rather us have a special election so that there's an opportunity for the voters to decide on this seat.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the special election?
Like, what does that mean?
I just wanted to ask that. What's the fiscal implications on the district?
There is a district, yes. That's a great question because it's going to cost quite a bit of money. Because it costs quite a bit of money to do a special election. Thank you for asking that, because I was actually just going to mention. But it is just like the regular board meetings, except for that you don't have several or two months or three months of campaigning. It's a lot. We, you know, we have to get the machines up. And I know you know more of the backend.
I can speak if you want.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. Don't get too, so. So yes, an election, you know, we have eight polling locations. That's 24 poll workers, two machine technicians, machines, ballots. It is going to cost the district because we pay all of those people. We pay for a lot for an election. So that's what I have to say. I think it's, it would be a lot. It'd be a lot. I think it would take us a couple of months. Because usually you have to, people have to go out, do their petitions, then campaign, then we have to make the ballots.
So if we were to do that, it may not happen until like December-ish?
Maybe even January.
Or January.
Maybe January.
Well, that's why I was asking specifically, what is the minimum requirement, right? Like for petitioning, how much time do folks have to get for petitioning? How much time do they have to get? Because I couldn't tell you whether or not we get more or less than the bare minimum.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I guess I'd have to look into that. Like, how much time do they get? I mean, regardless, they have to get their hundred signatures. So however long that might take them. But I don't know how much time we would be required to give them to get their hundred signatures. That I would have to find out.
Also, the machines are being used for the general election in November.
In November, yeah.
So we won't have access to them.
Right. Which also means we might not have access to the election workers either, like the poll workers or machine.
Not as early as November.
Not as early as November.
So for President Bernice, to go back to your concern about, yes, we have had some very heated, critical, and crucial conversations over the last couple of years. And I do understand that concern that if there's ever consistently a three-three vote, there's a possibility that we might not ever really get much accomplished until the next voting cycle in May. I think after considering everyone else's input, my concern is, we as board members, we were elected to the seat. We represent the community as a whole. But we also represent the voters who elected us because they felt that for whatever reason, we best represented their interests, their views, their values. And especially if we are considering, you know, what's going to happen with a particular hot topic, I don't know if I would feel right in making the decision for the voters on who represents them for those particular topics, if that makes any sense. I do want to say though, again, when we had the election, were there two seats up? It was you and Kathy, right? And, you know, you and Kathy have name recognition, right? You've been on the board before. When people, and that's a reality, when people recognize the name, that's also, that helps. I'm not saying that you all didn't earn, you absolutely earned it. But I think that when we're thinking about the third vote getter, you know, people still voted for that person. People still felt that that person was someone that was, from my lens, capable of being on the board and sharing the viewpoint of the community. I do, again, I am concerned having a special election, or especially leaving it vacant, because I think that that's going to be very challenging for us as a board moving forward. I'll pause there.
We would need to make that decision now. I mean, in regard to that, I mean, you know, if we elect to leave it vacant at this point, and two months from now, we see that it's, that's not working. I would assume we could revisit the options.
My wonder to those of you who want to keep, what is the, what's the benefit of keeping it open? Not, I'm just like, why do you feel we should keep it open?
I think you've alluded to it in regard to the votes and the name recognition that comes from already being here. And so anyone who wishes to challenge it next May may not have that same opportunity because they've been in the position six months or five months or whatever it turns out to be. And I think that's a reality. And so I guess I would rather have a level playing field at that time.
Yeah, and I think it will be because you and Vivian have been on the board for several years. It wasn't just five months. You know, when someone is on the board five months, they're still getting their feet wet. They're still learning the position. The name is not recognized. But when you're on the board three years and you're going into your second term, third term, fourth, that's a different situation than five months or seven months in this case.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I just, I just keep thinking about letting the election be the election when the election happens. I hear your concern about us having a three-three split. The reality is, we know that a three-three means that it doesn't pass, right? Like, the decision is, if we have a three-three split, it did not pass. And not all of our votes are a three-three. We, you know, we had six-one. So there's, I'm sure there's going to be debates and contentious conversations. And it's going to be what it is. I don't know that I feel as if we won't get work done if we don't have an additional person the same way that we've had seven people, but we still had a three-three split because one person was absent, right? We've got six people. One person could be absent, then we have five people. It could be three-two, it could be four-one, right? So I would feel more comfortable, even though it means going until May, of us waiting for the next election and go through the process again. I'm not like dying on the hill for this one. Like, folks got conversations and I'm open to hear it and reconsider. That's just how I'm feeling right now.
Yeah, and again, my concern is, and I'm saying this, I'm being transparent because everyone sees it. We don't always have a full board. We've had board meetings where three people are out. It will make things very difficult. And I say that because I'm just being transparent. That's the reality. So I am concerned that if we keep it at six, that there may be some other challenges with even running our board meeting. I mean, but at the same time though, we've still been able to get things accomplished when we've had one or two people missing on that particular evening. That's with seven though.
Yeah, we need four people for quorum. So no one gets sick. No one have a family emergency. And if you do, it can't be the same time as somebody else. Or it can't be the same time as three of them. Yeah, but I know it's your point, and I'm being a little facetious and I apologize. Like, this is serious, and I do take it seriously. We can never a hundred percent plan for anything that, even if we somehow at some point, whether it's tonight or some other time, come up with a plan that we have consensus to move forward and there is a seventh person. Like, we could still, I don't know that the probability is so much higher with us having six people versus seven people of us having quorum. Like, obviously, if there's another person, then we're more likely to have quorum. Yep?
I, you know, actually, I know you were being a little facetious, but I honestly don't hate it. I mean, in my, in my role, my private, you know, in my professional role, you know, one of our responsibilities is we have to make sure that the building is staffed appropriately, right? The state has many known staffing levels. So we're negotiating all the time. We are having conversations with staff members all the time. And as directors, we are constantly having conversations with one another. We're making sure, all right, I have this going on this day, I have this going on this day. How can we make sure that we at least have the bare minimum and working together as a team to make sure that the board or that, you know, the business can still function? So I don't necessarily hate the idea of if we as a majority decide that we don't want to go the route of either a special election or appointing a seat or letting it go to the third highest vote getter. Maybe that's the time for us to have a commitment amongst each other as a board and say, listen, we're going to have to have conversations amongst each other and really be respective of the fact that if we know that we're not going to be able to be at a board meeting, A, try your damnedest to make sure you're at a board meeting. And B, if it's a dire, you absolutely cannot be there. Have that open communication with the rest of the board. Just so we are sharing that commitment to be here as often as, as frequently as possible. And again, I'm just suggesting that if we decide as a majority to leave it open, I think that it's important for it to be a group effort between now and May so that the board can still continue to function. Okay, I know Amanda's not here. I'm going to table it so we can continue the conversation in the next board meeting. I believe it's the 29th, okay? Michelle, if you have some mind, if you can share with us, whenever you can before then, the cost, just so that we have everything, yeah, the cost of the special election as well. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, the timeframe. I'm going to find out the details.
We didn't really discuss the fourth option, as I recall. And I was drawing a blank on it again, which I guess was basically that we could solicit resident applications or resumes or whatever you want to call it and make a choice. So.
That completely removes the voters.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the.
I think that's why, I'm not speaking for anyone else.
That's why I didn't bring it up.
No, I just wanted to make, kind of close the loop on the fact that there was a fourth option there.
Okay, so we're going to table and then we'll continue the conversation on October 29th. So now we are going to move to our next agenda item, which is the NISBA discussion. I'm just going to pop or share a little bit here. This is an important advocacy opportunity for boards across New York State to review proposed resolutions and decide which ones we want NISBA to advocate for at the state level. Each year, a delegate, a delegate from our board represents Schenectady at the NISBA Business Meeting, where all districts share their input. Before we begin, I want to know how this aligns with our board policy. Thank you. So notice up there is twenty-three forty, powers and duties of the board. I have a guiding question as well. So before, while the policy doesn't specifically mention advocacy, it calls on the board to provide citizen leadership, represent community wishes, and maintain public understanding of schools. Participating in the NISBA resolution process is a natural extension of the work. It ensures Schenectady priorities and values are represented in statewide decisions that impact our students, district, community, and voters. All board members received the resolution guide last week to review. Tonight, we'll go page by page to hear any comments or questions you'd like our delegate to bring forward. While we're not taking a formal vote on each resolution, I'll be looking for general consensus to guide our delegate. In the document, you'll see the resolution committee's recommendations and DEA committee's comments, which examine each proposal through an equity lens. The committee characterized each as affirm, oppose, or neutral. We'll begin on page seventeen with the resolutions recommended for adoption. Once we finish those, we can revisit any of that were recommended for the board would like to. If, sorry, we can revisit any that were not recommended. And if the board would like further discussion, we can do that. So we're going to turn to page seventeen. And we will begin with the first resolution, which is a resolution which the New York State Board Association opposes, proposal to expand mayoral control to school districts beyond New York City. Any comments, concerns, thoughts? And this is sunsetted. We're good or not?
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is in essence against mayoral control. Okay, so resolution two. Resolve that the New York State Boards Association support legislation at the state and or federal level that would allow and enhance the sharing of services among school districts and other municipalities.
It seems to be actually in support of what we've just been discussing with regionalization. So I think affirming is an excellent idea.
I thought it was interesting that the DEI committee was neutral on this. But I thought the same thing with regionalization.
And I can explain that. The Resolutions Committee puts forth all these resolutions. Then the DEI committee sees the resolutions for about three days, four days in August, late July, August, when they first come out. And just evaluates them not from their acceptance, acceptability, or in terms of whether we should affirm or disagree with it. It doesn't have implications through a DEI lens. And that's what, that's what that is about. We didn't see that there were any implications with regard to that particular thing. And that's where the neutral comes from, from the DEI committee. And up above, it was, the affirm was, you know, because of implications in the mayoral control that we felt had, through the DEI lens. So that's what that means, that it's not about the resolution itself. It's about how it's perceived from the DEI perspective. Hope that helps.
So let's take a look at proposed resolution three, which supports, is a resolution that supports a proposal aimed at addressing the costs and administrative burdens of legal actions related to special education placements and services.
I just want to make sure I understand this. It says, like, addressed it how? That the state now is going to take on the burden or offer some type of financial assistance to districts? It like, it helped me.
No, I thought this one was, I have a question mark right next to it too. I thought it was, I don't think it was clear.
That's.
Yeah. So that's.
I think we need to understand that none of the resolutions is, it's not a law. You know, it's not, it's not as if it's legislation that's being proposed. And in this case, you see that the DEI committee had no consensus on it because it was felt that it might impact by some school districts. It might have DEI implications. But by others, because it does come down to having the state pay, some of the DEIs, I'm sorry, some of the special education situations have been inordinately expensive for some of the rural school districts, for example. You know, they, they're just, you know, buried in the cost relative to their entire budget. So that's what that meant in this case.
I also had concerns that it says frequent and frivolous lawsuits have been on the rise in recent years, according to who? Like, no, but like, who makes the determination that the lawsuit was frivolous? Especially as it relates to our children with disabilities.
It seems to me like more money and effort is being spent in fighting parents and giving their child the services that they need as opposed to just simply giving their child the services that they need.
Amen. So then we do not agree with this resolution, correct?
Agreed. Agreed.
Yep. Is that correct with you, Kathy, as well?
I, I mean, I, you know, I represent a large number of school districts through NISBA, and I do know the implications for some of those smaller school districts. It's incredible, and that's, you know, one concern I have. But, yeah, it's, it's kind of controversial, so. So, no is what you're heading.
Resolution three.
I would love for them to reword it differently.
Yes.
And it might be. That's one thing that happens in the business meeting, is that there could be amendments made to the suggest, to the suggested wording. As I said, it's not, it's not a law that's going to get in place.
Yeah.
It's, it's to get a sense of where NISBA's efforts should be spent in advocating with the New York State legislature.
And to your point, Board Member Jamaica, remember when we did the resolution around what happened with Princilla with the state? So, that was a good conversation. And what happened is that people did make suggestions to the language, and then I don't know, yeah. And then we brought it back. It still didn't pass, unfortunately, but yes.
Yeah.
If you, I mean, if you have any suggestions for whoever the voting delegate is, that we put forth on the floor of the business, well, it's virtual, but on the, at the business meeting, which is October 16th.
Okay, so now, resolution four. Resolve that New York State Board Association support incorporating pre-kindergarten funding into the school aid formula used for K-12 education.
I think we would support that.
My initial thought is yes.
But I'm wondering.
I'm worried about the formula.
Yeah, that's what I.
I, I'm worried about the formula. My first thought is, oh, so it's an increase in funding if you have pre-K? But I know that formulas don't always.
And, and we couldn't even begin to address the number of elements that are included in the, in the funding, I'm sorry, in the formulas. So, so, and I think this is just saying that it has not been a factor we'd like to have, be one.
Which I would love pre-K to be funded and not even be a question.
I wonder where are the implications?
Well, but, I mean, right now, the, you know, the, districts are, districts are trying to, trying to include pre-K programs. I mean, there's some around here that haven't had any pre-K programs at all. We've had them for 60 years, give or take. So, so that's part of the reason for trying to include that in, in this. So I think it should be affirmed.
I, I think the short answer is yes, it's a good idea. And just, like, the pause for making sure whatever language is, when they look at legislation.
And Alexandra, what will happen with that one? Because I have a feeling that's gonna be a huge conversation as well, because I think people are gonna ask about the formula-based funding, how would that be impacted? That's where, if you want to, you can chime in and say that that's, those are some of the questions that we had as well. But we do, you all agree with that one? Yes?
Fund babies.
Okay, so, resolution five. Resolve that New York State School Boards Association produce and widely recommend the adoption of a board policy or language to be added to the existing policy related to child abuse, stating that the adopt, that the adopting district will encourage and facilitate all school personnel, including those who are mandated reporters and those who are not, to participate once every three years in a course of, or workshop that presents information related to signs of child abuse and the responsibilities of reporting it. This one I found interesting, because it wasn't just a child abuse training last year. And in this year, there's an updated addendum that includes, I'm not using the correct word, but like cognitive challenges in the child abuse training. So those, like, for example, if Schenectady offered it, then now this year, the people who took it with Schenectady have to take the 15 minutes of the addendum information material. So this one I found interesting. I don't know if you have any background with that, Kathy? Because normally, and if, and if you all want to correct me, too, the child abuse training is done pretty, well, I know it was done last year. And then it was 2022, I believe, the other one that was taken. But it doesn't seem like it's something that's not frequently done. So that one, this one I found interesting.
But is it required more than once every three years?
Well, this is.
I think that's.
Well, the child abuse, sorry, Jamaica, the child abuse training that was, that everyone had to take last year, it was mandated, and they had to take it by April 2025. And then this year, they have to take the addendum. And that has to be completed by November 2026. So, right now, they've done it two years in a row. And I know there was a 2022 one as well. I'm not saying I am opposed necessarily, I just find it interesting.
Well, I, I, yeah, my wonder is, is the goal to make it a recommendation for every board, right? Because if, if this is a practice for us already, so, you know, hey, Schenectady, we're good, we do this. Is there rationale, hey, but everyone doesn't? And we want some type of consistency around this particular issue?
I think that's, that's what it comes down to. I wasn't aware of any 15-minute, you know, update that people got.
The child abuse training is mandated, though. It's mandated by the state. All, all, yeah, all educators in the state have to take the mandated child abuse.
And I'm confused.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm wondering about this. Because again, they took it last year, they have to take the addendum piece this year. And that changed, because September 1st, SED said that they had to take the two-hour again with the addition of the cognitive disabilities. And then they changed and said that now people just have to take the addendum. So again, my question then, Alexandra, would be, how is this so different than what has been done in the past? Because again, the mandated child abuse training has to be taken by all.
Who are, who are those that, one clause there, those who are not? Who is not mandated to take child abuse training right now? The board?
No, I don't mean, I don't know, because I know all educators have to take it.
Mandatory reporters and those who are not mandated reporters. Who are the not mandated reporters?
Teachers have to take it, school-related professionals have to take it, substitutes even take it.
But there must be some who aren't.
Yeah, that's why I'm not.
Yeah, that's the question. Who, who's not mandated that's inside school districts that then would have to take it once every three years? Because this is saying whoever those people are have to at least take it once every three years. Who's in our buildings that are not?
Oh, and.
I don't know, me, that's.
I was gonna say, I wouldn't, my thing is, you know, and parents.
Parents? Parents are not mandated?
Do they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is, this is a difficult question. Like, the mandated reporters, the definition in the law is, it has, it delineates certain folks. It's usually our certified personnel that are most likely the ones that have to take it. There are some folks that do not have to take it, like our safety folks, don't we? But there, this is something that we are actually still working with. Even our attorneys on top, to make sure we know exactly who are the mandated reporters in our building.
But our TAs have to take it as well.
Which are, which are.
Certified.
Correct.
Oh.
Okay. So.
I think we want to affirm it.
I, I. What questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll send you some of the questions to Alexandra that I have. But I think, I mean, we pretty much shared some of it here. I'll ask after this, because, all right. But I'll, I'll circle, I'll send you an email. I'll CC everybody, some of those questions. Okay, so we're good, though? We're going to affirm that one? We're okay? All right. Next one, resolution six. Resolve that New York State School Boards Association opposes proposal to raise the number of charter schools authorized in this state.
I agree. That was easy for me.
I don't agree. I don't think it should be statewide, for sure.
I don't agree.
I agree with this.
I, I, so, part of my why is the, the current way that charter schools operate in this state is that it takes public money without the same public accountability that we have. They get to, I'm overgeneralizing. They get to do whatever they want with whichever kids they choose and then send the kids back whenever they feel like it, without sending back the dollars. Every dollar that comes out of our public schools, that makes it harder for us to do our job.
I agree.
There's, there's, there's plenty of charter schools, there's, there's plenty of space for, for them to, to pop up, as we've seen in our own city. I would love for there to be a cap that prevents further bleeding from our schools in the name of choice.
Thank you.
I agree, in case you didn't. That's exactly what I was going to say.
Yeah, I know this is a very, it can be a very hot topic for various reasons. I do very much so support the idea of school choices on a first level. Factually speaking, there are parents who are just simply not satisfied with the learning environment of the public school in their particular district, for whatever reason it may be. They're just simply not satisfied. I think that the state level making this decision, I personally feel it's a little bit of an overreach. I personally feel that that should be a decision left locally, but, but that's just me. I feel as though if parents do not feel that their local district isn't adequately serving their child, they should not be limited to other options. And that option should not mean taking out a second mortgage on your home to afford private school.
I'm actually abstaining with this one, because I work for the union. So I think I, I think that's it, I don't chime in.
And I can see both sides there, Jamaica. I understand, you know, the, the perspective that you gave as far as funding. But again, from a personal lens, I think as a parent, I deserve choices. And, and I may not be able to, like, alluding to what Vivian said, I may not be able to afford a private school for my child.
I would say with this, let's hear from Amanda. We can just touch base with her over the phone. And then that can kind of guide what you're going, how you're gonna vote. But you also, as a delegate, you can also share some of the feedback or the thoughts of the board. Okay? Okay? So we'll circle back with Amanda. I'll give Amanda a call and see if we can do a three-way call with her. Okay? Is everyone okay with that?
I apologize for the interruption, but Ricky Stanley has moved out.
Oh, good. Okay, awesome. Good, good, good.
Take a foot.
Yeah.
Reason.
Yeah.
So the next proposal. Proposed resolution seven. Resolve, I won't read the entire, because this is a large one. But this is from Albany City School Board. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association shall advocate for an overhaul, overhaul of the current inadequate testing system to more accurately measure achievement in skills, knowledge, and abilities. And then it has a lot of more information with that. How do we feel about this?
On the surface, I'm gonna say yes. But I don't know anyone who actually agrees with the state testing as they currently are. So, I think I would need more information on what exactly this overhaul would look like. Are you repackaging the current product and calling it something different? Or are you really looking at the, the specifics of how those tests are developed? And are you really going to be using data and metrics to develop a better testing system based on our students, our children's current needs? Are you really going to root out what clearly doesn't work and move toward something that has proven to work, instead of treating this as an opportunity for a social experiment in hopes that it will work? On the surface, 100% yes. Get rid of it.
I will point out that Kathy Jibosi opposed this mainly because we're in the midst of doing it already. New York Inspires, which Mr. DiCaprio made reference to in his discussion about it, and that the entire Portrait of a Graduate is all going at this very thing. So it was felt that that was unnecessary. This was redundant, basically.
And I agree with you, Kathy. I thought of all that as well. The, the Blue Ribbon Commission, which we've had a presentation as well. And then also the Portrait of a Graduate. And then some of the regions, and I don't know for sure which ones, but I know that some of them are, I believe, are gonna be phased out as well, right? I see some, no, yeah. Yeah, but, um.
Phased out or retired, or what do you mean, that number?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think when I read this one, too, I kind of thought, hmm, I'm not sure if this is current with, with changes that are, are occurring.
So I think, and I'm just saying that Cap Region Bosis is probably voting no on that because it's already in process.
It's in process, but it's not done. And I, I think it's very important for us to keep our foot on the pedal until we get there. So even though all signs point in this direction, we haven't gotten there yet. So let's keep saying, good, I'm glad you're, you're getting it, keep going. Nope, not there yet. Come on. Until we actually have it.
The only objection I would have to that, and I understand your viewpoint, is, you know, time and priorities and energy, you know, put into that when maybe we are going to have to concentrate on what goes into the elements of the formula.
But isn't that also going to be a later discussion, right? So these are the proposed resolutions, and then it will be what priorities get, how much time and weight and energy. There's not any year that every proposal gets the same amount of attention.
You're, you're, you're right about that. There's, I mean, obviously, it's, you know, subject to whatever comes up in the legislature.
So if we have time to remind them, do this, too?
And now, this one is, of course, directed more at the New York State Education Department, not, not the legislature, so.
Right. I mean, I'm okay with moving this forward. I think we are moving, we're getting there, but I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this. I do like, though, too, that they mentioned things like, you know, getting teachers' input. Paraphrasing, making sure it's developmentally appropriate. I think that's really good. So they have some good news there that I think is really important to advocate for. So we're okay with this one? Okay. So the next one, resolution eight. Resolve that the New York State Board Association shall advocate for the number of lockdown drills to be reduced from four to two each year. I found, I actually found this one really interesting.
I appreciate that it says research is not conclusive as to the amount of psychological emotional trauma. Because the, the debate's not whether or not it's traumatic. It's how much trauma our children are faced when they're doing these drills to prepare them for possible scenarios. The, the, the feedback I, I get from my own children, I would love to see it reduced. I, I do think that it's excessive in, in its amount and that it's causing more harm than good. I don't think it's never, right? I'm not saying, oh, we never need to have these drills. But how many drills a year to say, okay, now we know the kid's absolutely got it, because we did it four times, as opposed to two?
And then I could be, please correct me if I'm wrong, because there's also eight fire drills as well, right?
Right, because there's, it's not just this.
No, so altogether, it's like 12 in one year.
I, this is tough. Because I feel as though really the focus should be more so on making sure the adults know how to direct children in the event of an emergency, because ultimately, it is going to be the adult's responsibility to manage that potential crisis in the moment. I don't know if 24 lockdown drills by the time you're in fifth grade is really going to solidify for a child. God forbid, in cases of emergency, this is exactly what I need to do. So, is it, is it redundant? Is it effective? Or should there be more focus on the adults knowing exactly what they're supposed to do?
That's interesting.
And how to convey that information to children in that moment without causing further panic.
Yeah, it's interesting you say that, because I know there's not a lot of research, but I did read that it helps build muscle memory, doing this over and over again. And also ensures that students and staff know what is, what. and also ensures that students and staff know what is, to, what to do quickly and calmly, and then gives students, um, time to test, oh, it, it gives the schools time to test communication systems, coordinate with law enforcement, and refine procedures. I think that's some of the stuff that I, I, um, because I was looking into it, but I thought that was interesting.
But now, like, on, on the flip side of that, there are other countries who have more frequent drills than we do, and I've seen videos online, I mean, they're, they're on it. They're, they're so quick with it, it's like second nature. I don't know. I get both sides of the argument, and it's a difficult decision because we are talking about our baby safety.
This is where I wonder what the district feels about this.
I mean, I think both sides, you know, share some valid pieces just around, I think on the adult side of things, and just making sure that we've got those systems in place, but I do get where you're coming from as well, it's just very based to that, the consistency and the repetition of it throughout the course, along with the fire drills, and I think that.
Yeah, I, I just feel this resolution.
I'm not sure if you want to share.
Yeah, that would be great.
I'd love to share a couple things. Um, the state used to mandate twelve fire drills per year, and the shift went to four lockdown drills and eight fire drills.
Okay, yep.
There hasn't been a, a student that, that passed a school fire since nineteen forty-eight, so there's actually a push nationwide to have more lockdown drills than fire drills, uh, because it's more likely that there'll be an active shooter event in a building, um, than a fire at this point in a school. So, um, as far as the drills go themselves, the state has gone a long way to create trauma-informed drills so that there are no more use of props. It's totally just an educational thing. And it is, there, actually, there's a lot of research about muscle memory, and the fact that the more often they drill it, then the more often they know what to do in an emergency, and as a, as a consequential type of thing. Um, when they reviewed video of what happened at Crossgate Mall a few years ago when there was a shooting, they noticed on video that all kids did the right thing, and went to the back of stores and doors, and the adults all stood there with their heads up saying, what's going on? So, um, you know, I think there's, there's, there is science behind muscle memory and why they do the drills, and nationally, the pushes to do more lockdown drills in a trauma-sensitive way. I think New York does it the right way. Um, I've seen other states that do it completely wrong. Um, I think that, you know, the balance they have right now is reasonable. Uh, they do two before the end of the, the end of the fiscal, the calendar year, they do two in the spring. Um, and I think that is enough to catch the number of students that come and go, as well as teachers that come and go to make sure everybody's had the drills.
Thank you.
Yep.
So are we, but no, a no on this?
I think this one is a tough one. I mean, and I, it would adjust.
I, I'm sorry, this.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate what Jeff said, kindling towards.
No. After what he said, I, education is key. So, you know, the perspective, perspective is important.
So no to the resolution with the drills is too much, you're saying?
I'm sorry, um.
Don't reduce it.
Don't reduce it, is what, yeah.
Oh, don't reduce it, okay.
And I have no.
It's not a hill I'm dying on.
Oh, no, but I think this resolution, I think, I mean, we're, I mean, you have parents here, though, that experience it too, but I'm gonna be honest, I don't live it, so I don't, you know, so I'd rather get your feedback.
I would, I would actually encourage folks to, to go and watch a drill, just so that they know what it looks like. Uh, we can certainly make that happen, if anybody ever wants to go and watch one.
Okay. How do you both feel about it, or kind of?
I, I, it's, it's not a hill I'm dying on.
Yeah, that's just.
Like, I feel how I feel.
Yeah.
And my kids hate it.
Kathy, are you okay?
I, I had written, I had written no here, and I don't know whether that was out of conversation I had at Bosis or, or not, but I, I, I'm with Jamaica, I'm, I don't, you know, it's not a hill I'm, I don't, I mean, does it personally affect me to a very, very extent?
I'm okay with no. You're okay with no?
I'm saying that based on what the experts said, right?
So no, no to the resolution or moving forward with it?
I'm, I'm saying, don't reduce.
Don't reduce it. Oh, don't reduce it, yeah. And that's what I'm saying, I'm, yes, that's what I'm saying. So you have that one? All right, good, good.
It's a double negative.
I know.
You gotta translate them in English sometime.
Okay, resolution nine. Resolved that New York State School Board Association, that the New York State School Boards Association support legislation which would allow the creation of a regional high school when determined by the local boards of education to be educationally or fiscally appropriate.
Isn't, again, this is one of the things we were just talking about?
Yes, it was. So, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Yeah. I would say that's fine with me, because I know a lot of, um, rural schools are talking about this as well.
It doesn't mean we have to do it, it just means that anyone that wants to can.
Yes. Kathy, you're okay with that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we're good. Okay, ten. Resolved in light of the recent extreme heat conditions days unfunded mandate that the New York State School Boards Association supports the state providing school districts and Bosis with necessary funding to allow for air conditioning and appropriate electrical needs in all public school buildings.
Yes.
Yeah, give us money.
Yeah. That's, yay!
There was such a silence for you.
Oh, no, right.
See, I didn't know how that was gonna go.
I know. All right, so the next one, that's good, okay. This is resolution eleven.
Sounds like about a thirty-second vote.
Yeah. Uh, resolved that the New York State School Board Association support the safe, state to safely incorporate AI into curriculum and district operations.
It sounds like a thing to me, we're gonna have AI.
It sounds like a thing, the wording's getting me.
Support the state to safely incorporate AI into curriculum.
Like, so this would then be a statewide curriculum with AI?
I, I would.
I don't understand.
So let's do this. If it's not the state, let's say that it's worded kind of wonky. If it's not the state mandating curriculum or, you know, any regulation, wouldn't we agree that AI should be included in the curriculum?
We have a, we have a policy, I think.
That AI is allowed to be for districts to, you know, figure out how this works. Because they mentioned the same things we discussed when we had this conversation. The administrative burden and, you know, opportunities when done safely and all of that stuff. But, uh, uh, state AI curriculum sounds crazy.
Well, I think, I think they're looking only, uh, I should say only, but looking at the questions, looking at the last two sentences, where, which says, questions also remain about the interplay between AI usage and their data and data privacy statutes and regulations. The state should take steps to address these questions and support districts as they incorporate this technology into the educational landscape. It doesn't say that it's taking, um, taking it over from the district. It, it's just saying that we want to make sure that there's a, a, a safety aspect of it to, in terms of data privacy and so forth.
They gotta fix your sentence.
Yeah.
I don't trust it, I mean, it's still new, and we're still learning, we're still learning about it, right? So how, I don't see how much of a safety guarantee could be given at the statewide level when we're still actively learning the best ways to incorporate AI. I, I don't know, I don't trust it. I think it's, I think it's a knee-jerk personally, but.
If it was more in line to say that support the state mandating data privacy statutes and regulations, right? When using AI, that's, you know, making sure that we, we don't have those issues. But it's, it's too wonky, there's just too many possibilities about what that sentence could mean that, um, I don't, I don't feel comfortable.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, um, back to that framing question, because we have a policy. We have an, and I'm looking clear with others, but we have an AI policy. I'm wondering if maybe we should look at that policy?
Mm-hmm.
Because if it doesn't align with this, then.
And, because I heard we were talking on it.
Yeah, we did. Is that okay with everyone? We take a, okay? But it looks like the consensus is no, not moving this one forward. But we can revisit that AI, AI policy. Is everyone okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. So twelve. Resolved that the New York State School Boards Association oppose proposals that would provide tuition, tax credits, or educational vouchers that benefit private or parochial schools.
Unpopular opinion. Um, I don't agree with the affirmation of this proposal to oppose it. That's just me, that's not necessarily a hill I'm willing to die on, but for me, this is the end all.
Would you be able to give a little bit of context around the DEI committee affirming this, if you can? If not, no worries, but.
Well, they felt, um, I, I, I don't recall specific discussions about it, but, but basically, it, it, it was concerned about the fact that, uh, the people that might get the tuition, tax credits, and educational vouchers might be the ones who are already in the best position to provide for private schools. And it would take away then from people who are in the public schools, particularly in districts such as this.
To your point, I have seen it in other states where they do provide tax vouchers or that would afford a parent to be able to send their child to a public school. But the way that it was modeled in other states was there was an income cap to even qualify for that voucher.
Yeah, I agree with opposing the proposal. Again, double negatives are really just all we're exposed to.
This one, I don't agree with it either. How many, is that, um, what did you share, or what did you think about this one, Kathy?
I'd, I'd, um, go with opposing it, I mean, affirming this particular thing.
It's really hard to be like, I affirm the opposition.
So many of them were written by the local districts that way, yeah.
Go to the next.
So we're saying we're split, we.
We're, we're split, so that's, um, we'll talk, Amanda. Okay, okay. So this one is Amanda. Are you all okay with that, like, reaching out to, or, okay, yeah, okay, perfect, okay. So resolution thirteen. Resolved that the New York State School Board Association shall advocate to the, advocate to the New York State Education Department, the United States Department of Agriculture, and federal legislators for, one, the reinstatement of whole milk as an allowable option in school breakfast and lunch programs in addition to existing low-fat offerings. Two, the recognition of updated nutritional science supporting the safety and benefits of whole milk in the diets of children and adolescents.
I'm okay with that.
I, I'm fine with it, I just feel like it's, it's about cost. Whole milk is cheaper.
I'm fine with it. Every time I go to the store.
You're okay?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm not strongly opposed to this. Um, yeah.
Even though I don't like whole milk, I would.
You're not doing the whole. Yeah, I know. Yeah, okay, so we're, we're okay with that one. All right, fourteen. Resolved that the New York State School Board Association, NISBA, shall advocate for amendments to New York State Education Department's regulations to allow a set amount of daily access, um, recess time up to thirty minutes per day to count toward required instructional hours for elementary students.
Like, don't we discuss this before? I feel like this has come up before. Was this in a special last year?
I believe, it, no, it doesn't say it was, yeah, I believe it was, yes. And yes, I think we all agreed on this one last year.
But it didn't, I don't think, it, it didn't pass.
It didn't pass.
Yeah.
But I agree. Um, just so you all know, though, this is a big campaign that NICE has as well, for the thirty minutes recess time.
So walk through for those that don't remember or weren't here last time. That the recess needs to be, so is it two parts? This, this is the part I'm trying to get at. Is it about the mandate for the amount of time? And it being considered instructional hours because now it's not? Or is it just one or the other?
I think we could have, I figured, I all could correct me, but it's not considered instructional time, so they want.
So it doesn't count towards the day?
Yeah.
The number of hours our children are in their care, even though we know the social emotional benefits.
Yes, and that's.
Because you need a room outside.
Yes, what I just gave you, it gave you some information about the, um, benefits of recess.
I just think thirty minutes isn't enough, but that's a conversation for another time.
And I think when we were talking about it too, I think time came up. Given time, like, when will they schedule the recess when they have acad, certain academic requirements and things? I, I believe time was an issue that we talked, or that was brought to us.
But if it counts as instructional hours, doesn't that give us more flexibility?
I would, I think so. I, yes, I would say so.
Maybe it's embedding it through the transitions as well.
Mm-hmm.
Also, having a brain break during class, transitioning from one subject to another.
Literally, when they take recess, right?
Even they're tran, using transitioning from one class to another.
So I, I guess the other question is, and, and not necessarily for a deep dive, but daily recess time does not, it doesn't necessitate that it's like lunch recess. That thirty minutes could be recess used at other times, not just, in theory.
In theory, yep.
I still think it should be more than thirty minutes for lunch recess, but.
So how will this impact high school students, or would it? I don't miss that. Because, I mean, I, would that impact the number of students who don't graduate because they skip general?
Well, this says for elementary.
Yeah, this is elementary, yeah.
The PEP is not part of this particular, it's separate.
So are we okay with moving this one forward? We're okay?
Yes, our little need to go outside, and Vivian brings up a point that our bigs need time too. But it's just not, it's not in that one, from Bosis.
I think you're good with that one, too.
Yes.
Okay, so we're good.
Okay, getting there.
All right, so this one is resolution fifteen. Um, NISBA shall advocate for the following policy changes. Substantial increases in state reimbursement rates for out-of-district special education placements to reflect true and current costs, including transportation-related services by, by way of reform of the excess cost aid formula to ensure more equitable and timely distribution of funding, particularly to districts facing a high proportion of costly mandated placements, um, relative to total enrollment.
I say yes to this one.
I say yes.
Yes. Yeah, we're good? All right. Proposal, resolution sixteen. eighteen fifteen. Okay, resolution six, okay, resolution sixteen. Resolved that New York State or NISBA seek and promote legislation to reform current legal notice publication requirements.
Oh, I'm reading the rationale, that's, so it makes more sense. Um, and anyone correct me if I'm wrong, it's saying we shouldn't have to just use the newspaper, which can be costly and inefficient.
Yeah.
A YouTube show. Well, for elections, we are required to put out publications once a week for so many, you know, and they, I mean, it's, it's very expensive. They charge us a lot, and we have to put it in the time to do that, because that, it costs thousands to do that. So that's, is this what they're saying, that it shouldn't happen?
I think they're, I think they're looking at alternatives.
Yeah, that there can be other ways to publish the information that aren't quite so costly.
So does it sound like a?
Yes.
I'm good.
Yes, okay, all right. Okay, so the next one. Resolution seventeen. Resolved that New York State School Boards supports limiting a district potential annual whole harmless phase out to no more than two percent of their district budget, even if doing so extends to no more than two percent of their district budget, even if doing so extends that district's overall phase-out period.
Can you explain to me exactly what that? Kathy, do you wanna?
No, I can't right now. To tell you the truth, I, I, I'm drawing a blank on this one, I don't recall what, what this was about. Oh, okay, this is the, this is the one that, because last, uh, I don't think it was for this year, it was last year where, where fifty percent of the school districts were not held harmless and, and they lost considerable sums of money, that, which was gonna happen in one year. This is suggesting that there needs to be a phase-out of that kind of formula, that kind of foundation aid. Um, I, I recall Berlin was losing five million dollars, a fifteen million dollars budget, as I recall, which was like one-third of it, in a single year, that, that's very tough to adjust to, so that's what this is about.
So the state harmless is the school district will receive at least the, what they received the year before, right?
Uh, I don't know if that's, no more than two percent, it might be reduced by two percent, but.
And phased it, extend it.
Yeah. Yeah. But I'm saying, because I don't know if, if, if we all know what harmless the state harmless was.
Yeah, that's what, so that's, I mean, that's basically what it is, it's, it's to a, a lot, maybe two percent isn't gonna turn out to be what it is, but that there would be a, a phase in of the reductions that would be necessary to, to accommodate the state budget.
So what, how do we feel about this one?
It, it makes sense to me, given gap elimination adjustment and all the other.
Yeah, so, I mean, it goes back to the gap, which was the, um,
Yeah.
Elimination adjustment, which was to benefit the state, not to benefit the district.
Correct. So we're good with that one, let's go to resolution eighteen. NISBA advocates for a budget threshold to protect rural districts with low enrollment and large geographical footprints in the foundation aid formula. I would like more, I mean, I'll, it will be interesting, but yes. Kathy, you're okay? Kathy, you're good?
No, that was, it's worthy of discussion, I mean, it's, we have three hundred, give or take, half of our school districts are, have been considered rural in the state of New York. I mean, you know, there may need to be things that are like more consolidations at that, at that level. Um, but those are tough to enact in New York State these days, so.
Okay, so resolution nineteen. NISBA supports legislation allowing school districts to receive compensation for the New York Liquidation Bureau for liability insurance claims arising out of claims brought under the Child Victims Act in cases where the insurance company holding the policy became insolvent and its estate was executed by the liquidation bureau.
Sesame Street, the upcoming case.
Yeah, I, yeah, I.
This has to do, this has to do with many, this has to do with many, uh, 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 at least examples of rare child abuse cases, as I recall in the discussion, and, and the fact that the insurance company may have gone out of business and it, and, and can't, can't cover it, so then the school district is supposed to cover the, cover the liability, but what they're saying is that the school district should be able to be part of this liquidation bureau, uh, ability to, to get money from them, that's my understanding of it. I, I'm not familiar with many of those organizations at all, but that's what, that's what it's about, because I gather that there've been at least a couple of school districts where, you know, there's a thirty million dollar, I think it was down on Long Island, thirty million dollar resolution, or, uh, you know, uh, compensations for whatever had happened in, in regard to that particular district. And, and the insurance company's out of business, and the school district is left holding a thirty million dollar liability that they would have to bond and do everything over the next, you know, thirty years, give or take, or something like that.
Right.
But there is this liquidation bureau that has funds for these kinds of things. I have no idea the size of the funds.
So it just means that, you know, the, the family still can be made whole with whatever the funding would come through the liquidation bureau without, um.
That's my understanding. Breaking the school district and the other students.
Yeah, and it says, like, you know, the district has to still prove that it was maintaining coverage and it wasn't any fault of the school district, that the, this business went out of business. Um, but to have access so that while the, the child and or family receive their compensation, that the school then isn't using its general fund to, to pay for it.
I have to abstain. Kathy, until later, how do you feel about this one?
So you're saying yes? I would support it.
You would support it, you.
Yeah, yeah. And, and you wanna say for the purposes of, because there is still an avenue for families to, to get their compensation as there should be without, it says it here, current and future students and taxpayers receiving burdens that are, you know, far, far exceeding.
Okay, we can say yeah, I'll be, I'll be on there too, but not as a delegate, but I'll, I'm, I'm interested to hear their rationale, the districts that brought this forward as well, but yes. Okay, the next one, I think. Um, resolution twenty. NISBA supports an amendment to New York State law that would authorize public school districts to establish and, um, and fund health insurance reserve funds through board-approved resolutions.
So this is if a district wants to have a health insurance, because they're funded, it can.
Yeah, if we have.
It can.
Yeah, that's, I wonder if that's.
Are you looking for Terry?
How, yeah. Terry?
We can just add another kill.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, does this mean that, um, in the event that due to market reasons, the employer contribution costs end up increasing, that potentially, if there were reserve funds, it might mitigate employees having to increase their contribution just to have health insurance?
That is what I think.
Yep.
Yeah, I would support it.
Yeah.
How does everybody else feel?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the next one. Um, NISBA urged the state, New York State Legislature to amend General and Municipal Law, Section six J, to explicitly include boards of cooperative or BOCs among the entities authorized to establish and maintain workers' compensation reserve funds.
That sounds like an equity issue with regard to BOCs being treated the same way other schools are, basically, you know? They have employees too. So I, I, I would support this one.
Okay, yeah, okay, we're good. Okay. Twenty-two. Resolved that the New York State School Board Association shall support legislative and regulatory changes to add financial literacy into the statewide K through twelve curriculum with additional state funding to support implementation of this new curricular expectation.
Yes.
Yes. Kathy?
I believe this one is, uh, part of the New York Inspires again, coming up in the Nevada Regents, is my understanding. Um, I have a note here about no, and I'm not sure where that came from. I don't think anyone's opposed to financial literacy, they're just concerned about how we fit anymore in, into the curriculum. That's, that was the concern expressed, so.
Yeah. Okay, so resolution twenty-three. NISBA supports legislation on the state level that allows school districts to choose to authorize school medical directors and their clinical designees to evaluate, diagnose, temporarily treat, and prescribe medications for students on campus in accordance with New York State law. I don't understand the rationale for this one.
This one is very controversial, oh, I, I should say it's very controversial, but it's very much supported by the rural school districts, because they have no doctors available in the rural school areas to be their medical director, uh, you know, in the sense that we have Ellis Hospital and use that, that's what it's about, and it, and so it's allowing more flexibility in the medical world. I don't know exactly how it would all work itself out, whether it's through some telemedicine, you know, exactly, but that's what it's about.
Yeah, and it says in there at the same time, similar to what you were saying, in rural New York, there is an immense shortage of pediatricians, meaning a significant number of students without primary care physician or a medical, or a medical home. I, I say yes to this.
I, I, I say yes. It's not as if they're saying that it's not someone with a, a medical background, right? It's not just.
It might be the school nurse, I mean, if you have, if you have that, if you even have a person available.
Which is a nurse.
No, I just, I, I'm seeing it at the bottom where the resolution suggests an opt-in program, which, okay, look.
I, I didn't hear the end of your statement.
The opt-in, she says that she, she's like, I'm sorry.
Yeah, at the end, I see that there's an opt-in, that's being suggested, so.
It's not mandated for each, just, just what you mean, yeah.
Are you okay to Alexandria?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good, so let's move to, do we want to look at the ones that were not recommended? All right, okay. I'm fine.
You're fine? I'm good.
Okay.
Me too.
Yeah. The only one that I, I think was, um, interesting was resolution twenty-four. We kinda talked about that, it's regional, regionalization, that's what we were just talking about. So I said yes to that resolution, the twenty-four, but I'm not sure, it would be interesting to see why it was not recommended. Maybe I'm missing something, but, um, no, it will, they did, but. Yeah, not by those.
Oh. Oh, I see number twenty-six.
Arrow, twenty-six. I see, yeah, okay. So are we okay with the ones that were recommended, just to look at those? Okay, all right, so. Alexandria, just let me know if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions, but just let me recap quickly.
Sure, perfect.
Resolution six and twelve, we are gonna three-way with Amanda. And eleven, we're gonna say no, but we're gonna follow up and review our policy.
Correct.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, we're gonna, no, you got it, you got it, okay?
Um, just as a reminder, Alexandria's thing needs to be submitted to.
We already did, okay, so may I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve the NISBA voting, um, delegate resolution, which names Alexandria as the delegate? May I have a motion? Thank you, Board Member Kathy, second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to approve the NISBA voting delegate, which will be Alexandria Carver, resolution carries.
And now I will submit that to NISBA.
Yes, yeah, because.
Yeah, she has her own private time.
I think, I think it technically had a date of the term, but it, but it, 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 down now told me that it could be even a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll get it done as soon as possible.
Okay. Okay, also, thank you, everyone, for engaging in that conversation. We have a second opportunity for comments from the board or the public.
I just wanna remind teachers, staff, students, that, um, the city of Schenectady is having a community meeting tomorrow at the Boys and Girls Club from six to nine. It is the closeout to phase one of our comprehensive planning, and I just wanna state that your feedback and input is necessary in that space. You have things that could impact the trajectory of this plan for the entire city. So if you can, and your schedule allows, please join the city of Schenectady at the Boys and Girls Club tomorrow from five to nine. It is a family, um, friendly event, there'll be food, there'll be activities for children, and then there will be breakout sessions where, uh, the adults can give, um, some input on the data that we've collected over the last twelve months by way of some of our student, school board representatives, um, meeting with some of the young people with the school district, and just local community meetings. So everything from the last twelve months will be discussed, so if you can, um, stop by.
Thank you, Board Member Alexandria. Okay, the board will enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. While no voting occurs during executive session, um, we will, um, move into executive session required by New York State law because of a personnel issue, may I have a motion?
Some motion.
Second? I thank you, Alexandria, for the board. Alexandria, any discussion? All in favor? Good evening, everyone, have a good night.
I was saying it together during, and then it went off on me, and I couldn't get back in, the new password I gave.